Very good. So I guess, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. Okay, at 7:00 PM. Call the order, do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. So, looking at our attendance board, we have just a couple of members, I guess a few members would be considered the public. Is anybody interested in a public comment or public speak? Item number two on our agenda. Okay, hearing none. We'll go ahead to item three, which is additions and deletions of agenda items. Does anybody have anything, any additions or deletions?
Yeah, so I would like to add item 12B, Mahoney Sable Payment.
12B, 12 is public speak.
Yeah, do it 12B and do it in executive session, is what I would like to do. So the reason I added it at the end is because we can kick everybody off and then immediately adjourn after the discussion.
Okay. I'm not sure that goes under 12, under public speak. I mean, it'd almost be that you would add an item, you know, well, I guess it would be 12.1 or something. Yeah, item 13 and change adjournment to 14?
Yeah.
If that makes you happy, then that's...
That would make me happier.
Okay.
All right. Would anybody like to make a motion to add an agenda item, Mahoney Sable?
And in executive session.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, so Diane's motioning to add an agenda item to the end of the, of the agenda, which would now be item 13, which is the Mahoney Sable Payment in Executive Session. Moving adjournment to item 14, Kurt seconded. Did I understand the motion correctly?
Yeah, I think so.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, let's go ahead and take a vote. I'll go around my screen, Diane.
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Linda? Rob?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Louise?
Aye.
And I'll also vote aye, because we don't really need to do a roll call vote on something like this, so nobody abstains unanimous. Thank you. Okay, so we will add an agenda item 13, Mahoney Sable Payment in Executive Session, which is generally means that public is not participating in that particular section. And adjournment will move to item 14. Okay, the motion passes. Do we have any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, let's go on to item four, which is the Town Administrator's Report. Eric?
Okay, you should have all had this in your revised packet, but I'm just going to go over it real quick. As most of you know, because you probably got the letter, the revow is starting, and that's going in the next couple of weeks. That's a budgeted expense. It's going to be at the budget. It is a full measure and list revow, which is kind of difficult under COVID conditions. So basically, what they're doing is going around, doing the exterior measurement, getting all the information they have. And if they do lift, you know, if COVID restrictions do get lifted, they will then go back and do the interior inspections. But it's unclear at this point whether that can really take place or not. Town clerk, we hired a new assistant town clerk, finally. Her name is Matea Whitford, and she has opted for partial payment in lieu of health benefits. So we decided this year, one of the things we would do is if we had an employee that qualifies for health benefits, that chooses to opt out, per the, the employee handbook, they can basically get half the cost instead of healthcare. So the bottom line is that saves the town about $6,000, because she opted for that, as opposed to signing up for the health plan.
Eric, can I interrupt you for a second? You said something about the revised packet. What were you saying was in the revised packet?
The Town Administrator's Report.
I'm seeing the budget summary, I'm not seeing anything with the Town Administrator's Report in the packet online.
Seems to be kind of blank.
Hmm, I just pulled it off the website about 20 minutes before the meeting.
I pulled it, I pulled it off around the same time, though, and I don't have it.
I just pulled it off now, it's, I don't see it there.
Okay.
Under item four?
Yep. So item four is blank in your packet?
Yeah, it says the cover page, Town Administrator's Report.
Okay, my suspicion is we've got a link in Correct on the website, and it's pointing towards the original version, not the revised version. So, Amanda, can we take care of that?
Yeah. Would you like me to pull up the report?
Do you want to see it on the screen, or do you want me to just walk you through it?
I'll take it, I'm okay with just walking through it. If anybody feels differently and they want to see it, that's fine.
Okay.
And so, I mean, you're going to post the corrected link and packet afterwards.
Sorry about that.
Eric, before we do that, I'd like to, where is the assistant town clerk from? Is she local, or?
Say again?
Where is she from? Does she live in town, or is she out of town?
No, she doesn't live in town. She's one of the adjacent towns, close, but not in Andover. Public Works, the transfer station upgrade is mostly finished. There's a few minor expenses we may incur, but by and large, that project is, is dealt with. The big item that you'll see later in the packet is the transfer station brush pile. As many of you know, we sent that out to RFP about a month and a half ago. Basically, we didn't get around to grinding up the brush pile last year, and we didn't do it the year before. We normally put aside about $7,500 a year to do that, and we just didn't get to it last year to do. So we still have, so we didn't spend the $7,500 last year. We didn't spend the money in the budget this year, but, so now we have a lot more to do. We went, when we went out to RFP, our original lowest bid was $37,000, at which point I said, woo, we're not doing that. So we looked into renting one and doing it ourselves. The shortest term rental we could get was for a month, and they wanted about $55,000 to rent the unit. So that obviously wasn't going to do us any good. I went back to our, the guys who cut our wood, and asked them whether they would consider doing it with their big chipper. They hemmed and hawed a little bit, but ultimately said no. Scott Person had a contact with CT Mulch, who originally said they didn't want to do it for us. You know, we went back and forth with them a couple times. They finally gave us a bid of around $14,000 to grind it up and dispose of it. So that cost is about right. The last time we did it was, I think, three full years ago, and that was about $10,000 in a much smaller pile. So it does exceed the amount we have in the budget pretty considerably. Right now, we have $7,500 in the budget, and the total bill for this thing is going to be about $14,000. So, and we can talk about that a little bit more later. I'm just laying it out here in my, my report. We are still hiring Richard Begon as a temp employee in Public Works. We are advertising right now for a maintainer one. As you know, we budgeted for a fourth Public Works employee. But kind of two things happened. Early on, we had a lot of overtime expense early on because of the storm cleanup from Isaiya, or however you pronounce that. However, it's working out in the sense that we're underspending the Public Works budget, because we've had a fourth person on the books. We essentially have a full-time fourth person right now in Richard Begon, but because he's only a temp worker, he's cheaper, and we're not paying him healthcare. So with the overtime, we're still in great shape. We're still about plus, you know, we're still about $6,000 under budget total for employee salary. But you're going to see when we get to the review that those two line items are over, but within this whole salary category, we're in great shape. So, the current road foreman, Ed Kasich, is likely leaving December 1. We're in the hiring process for his replacement, and we've notified the union that we're kind of shifting that from a traditional road crew foreman to a true working supervisor position that will be not in the union. We're also going to hire, as soon as Eddie retires, we're going to hire a maintainer one to replace. So, that's that. The... So, the... Actually, I don't want to talk about that right now. We'll talk about that later. Oil and diesel. We, last year, we locked in about this time, or a little later, for really inexpensively, for oil for the year and for diesel. You know, we locked it in somewhere around $1.50, $1.50 to a gallon. The lock-in right now is really low also, and we ought to consider locking in for next season now while we can, and we, and it's still cheap. It's a gamble. And the other thing that's a gamble is, we don't really know right now how many school buses we're going to need. We don't know how cold it's going to be. So it's one of these things where we're trying to lock this in, but we've been consistently over in the amount we're locking in. And it's very hard to predict that accurately. But we're, you know, Laura and I are considering locking in sooner rather than later, because right now, the prices are really low. And usually, at least for heating oil, they go up considerably during the heating season. As far as the finance department, we're starting the process of moving to Edmund's software. We are currently interviewing for the Assistant Finance Officer. We have the last rounds of interviews tomorrow, at which point we will have interviewed, I think, nine, eight candidates. And, you know, with the intention of the following week, picking a candidate and offering the position and figuring out, start negotiating for salary. The other thing that's an issue is that Laura Edwards, who's the building manager for the elementary school, has submitted her resignation effective January 1st. So that's kind of accelerating the need for the finance director. So we submitted, we, I found out about that yesterday, and we have now advertised for the finance director position with the intention of interviewing for that as soon as we have an applicant pool. So, the next thing up is the federal reimbursement for COVID. This is primarily Barbara is working on this right now. We are filing for repayment from, for a bunch of our expenses related to COVID-19 with the FEMA slash state. It's not going to be a huge reimbursement, but it may end up being, you know, $4,000 to $6,000, something like that.
Oh, wait, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm working, I'm muted, because I'm on my other computer working on it, because I'm, it's due tomorrow, it's due Friday. I'm up to over $6,000 if they allow all the costs. So we'll see what happens with it.
Yep. So, we're, we're working on that. We're not going to end up filing for storm-related expenses for Isaiya. I sat in on all the, the conference calls with the state and with FEMA regarding that. And the amount of effort involved versus what we would potentially recoup just isn't worth going through all the hoops to do it. FEMA is actually pretty crazy in terms of what they require for, for refunding that. So I don't think we're going to recoup anything from that. But the good news is that we actually didn't really spend any. I mean, we spent, you know, $1,500, $1,500 in overtime expenses, but that's basically our only real expense. We didn't suffer any damage. You know, we didn't segregate out the wood pile, so we can't really get, get refunded for that. So, the other thing I just wanted to give you kind of an advanced heads up now is that as of right now, we're fine on the registrar's budget. But if we go to, since we're going to elections in the spring, if we end up with an additional referendum, we're going to be over on the registrar's budget. And part of that is just the, the requirements right now for holding an election under COVID conditions are just a lot more, a lot more employees required, a lot more paperwork, a lot more time than really what we had, what we budgeted for in a normal year. So we're fine now, but I'm just giving you kind of an advanced heads up that we may run into that at some point in the future. And that's pretty much it for my report, unless you have additional questions for me.
Eric, I have a quick question for you on the oil and diesel.
Yeah.
We locked in, you said about $1.50 last year?
Yeah, I think it was $1.52.
Okay, which kicks the butt out of what I locked in on for my own heating oil, which is annoying. No, more appropriately, what's, what is it looking like now?
Um, I didn't see a final number, but I think we're looking at like $1.60 right now for a lock-in for next year.
So fairly comparable.
Pretty comparable, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Historic lows still, really.
Yeah, and way better than we've ever done in the past, so.
Oh, my goodness, yes.
Yeah.
No question. I mean, $1.60, we would have killed for that a few years back, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
I have a question about the town administrator, the assistant.
Yes.
Yeah, she opted out for this year, is that a yearly opt-out?
Um, so she would have the option at the beginning of each fiscal year to opt back in to the insurance if she so chose.
And that would allow that?
Yes.
That's allowable? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
By her union contract, she's automatically allowed, based on the number of hours she works, to have medical benefits. So the way it works is that if at some point in the future, as long as it falls, you know, basically, the next time the enrollment period opens, which I think is at the beginning of the fiscal year, then she would be able to re-enroll.
Okay.
Just like you get, as a normal employee, you can change once a year. If there's something in your plan you want to change or drop.
Probably would also apply if you had a, can't remember what they call it, some qualifying change in your status. So that's a possibility also, but it's just the way those things work.
Right.
Okay. Eric, I have a question, just curious as to why we haven't ground up the brush pile in the past? Is it just, didn't get to it, or what?
Um, yeah, didn't get to it last fall. I had kind of just taken over, and, you know, Eddie, the road crew foreman, had kind of told me that we really probably ought to do it. And I said, go ahead and do it, and then nothing ever really happened. So I think he just never really took the time to... And, and part of it is, we had been kind of going from doing it fairly low-key with the handshake deal to actually putting out RFPs, you know, and documenting what we were doing. And it, that just was one of the things that got lost in the shuffle. If I had planned it better, I would have tried to do it in like July, you know, and split the, the cost between two fiscal years, because we spent zero on it last year, and we're over-spending it this year.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, it's just nice to have that planned expense and meet the, meet the budget, and everyone agreeing on, just wondering. Okay.
We have to think about something like that, where we have an expenditure that we know doesn't come up every year. But it, it's like putting aside for a fire truck. You know, we know it doesn't happen, it happens every 10 years, whatever it is. We know, all right, every three years, we have to grind up brush.
Well...
Yeah.
The reality is, given, uh... Given the fact that we're piling the brush up on top of a capped landfill, we really should not be letting it go as long as we do. So we really should be grinding this every year. And I think what we got, we have to do is get back to the point where we are once a year grinding this thing up. I think letting it go that long has, you know, one, it's kind of hard. It's getting in the way of the drainage right now. So we really need to address this going forward on a regular basis.
Okay.
Any other questions for Eric? I'll just point out that Amanda pointed out separately, and I'll just let everybody know that the, if you click the link in the email that she sent, it will go to the old administrator's packet. However, if you go to the website and you navigate through to the Board of Finance meetings and agendas, and then you click on the packet link for today's meeting, it will come up with the revised one. So it is there, it's just that they probably, both documents live there, so you'd have to, you know, look like, like both of them, so. But anyway, she displayed it, so I think we're okay there. All right. If there's nothing else for Eric, we'll move on to Agenda Item Five, which is the Treasurer's Report. Barbara?
Hey, yeah, hi. Good, good evening, everyone. Just a few comments. Budget this year, as with last year, things are pretty slow in Town Hall because of the COVID shutdown, so no fires to put out in terms of overspending, or, you know, people bumping up against anything. Thing I would comment on, as Eric did, there will be extra costs for registrar's elections. And the registrar, Wally, you know, has talked to me about that a handful of times. He's concerned that you know upfront, because if he's coming to you later with overspent budgets, he doesn't want it to be, you to be surprised by it.
Do we have any idea what the scale of that's going to be?
The one thing that's happening is that there is a part-time clerk who was actually put on payroll to help with absentee ballots. So, right now, I don't have a total on that, it's ongoing. I do want to mention, though, an offset to that, Secretary of State recognizing that this was going to happen, has actually granted to the town some money, and we've gotten about $4,000 so far in grants. That's probably all we're going to get, although you, you just don't know, because that came as a surprise. But it was Secretary of State's office, it came in three pieces. And again, the registrar would like you to know that when you go to, maybe have to increase his budgets, that there was that revenue offset. So we'll track that as we go along, both the expenses and revenues. I'll keep you updated on that as we need to address it. We do need to address it expense-wise. The other thing that's going to happen, and this happened last year, the seniors just aren't doing much, and they've got a budget with a few thousand dollars in it for senior trips and other activities as well, as well as their whole transportation program, which is running, but not spending a lot of money right now. And that could get shut down, you know, as it did last spring. So that's a budget that has a few thousand dollars in it. Eric mentioned benefits, specifically health insurance. And I think you probably know that the second person in my office left in the middle of July, and she had an expensive benefit package, so that's all being saved. That position was not, not refilled. I picked up some hours, but, um... There will be a savings, there'll be plenty of money left over in benefits. Let's see, the other thing, so that's about it for expenses, unless anyone has any questions specifically about...
It looks like the only thing of significance that's kind of running ahead might be the insurance line, is that just because of the timing of payments?
Quarterly, quarterly payments, yeah.
Okay, so we would have already paid for the second quarter fiscal year.
I, what does it look like? I, I'd have to go look at it.
It's like 58% of budget, and we're just not that far through the year, so that's just the one...
Yeah, it's quarterly, quarterly payments. And we also, in that budget, is fire department, which is a payment upfront, so.
Going to be front-loaded, then?
So it's, yes, yeah, yeah. And it's probably going to, the estimates on that are really good. The KERMA auto, I'm sorry, auto property, and then the workers' comp, those are usually pretty good numbers, so. Uh, yeah, any other budget questions? Because the only other thing I'll mention on the revenue side, the, nothing coming in yet, although the first ECS education cost sharing payment, which will be a quarter of the money that's received, is due to come in at the end of this month, I should see it, you know, by the beginning of next week. So that will show up in next month's budget. And then the Town Aid Road Grant, we've already got the first payment on that, and that's reflected in the TAR report, $93,000. That's a 50/50, so we should be seeing another $90, $93,500 sometime later in the year. And that's all I have for notes on, on my side. So if there are any questions about revenue or expenses?
Do you guys want to go through it line by line, or what do you want to, to do with that? Are there any specific things you want to talk about within the budget summary at this point?
Not for me.
Yeah, it's early in the year, we're doing fine. I'll certainly keep you updated, you know, to things that you should know as the year goes on.
Yeah, and just so that you know, when, for the salary for Public Works, right now, we're about $10,600 unexpended on the regular salary line, and we're about $4,500 over-expended on temp. And that's because at the moment, we're hiring Richard Begon, as opposed to hiring him, you know, he's still a temp worker as opposed to full-time.
And you have the offset of the overtime additional, too, so.
Yeah, we have the additional overset. So right now, we're running about $5,000 over in the, you know, or $5,000 under in that combined salary bucket. So we're still in pretty good shape, and no real issues there. And we're also, again, because Richard has not been on the insurance plan, you know, we're running about another $4,000 surplus for not having paid him benefits at this point. So, just so, that's where we're that, there with that. The only other thing, I think, at some point, we're going to run into a problem with, again, is in mowing and ground care.
I thought of that one, too.
Well, so, this is kind of a giant... So the, the big problem is, we had a problem with the well and the well pump this year, and we ended up getting the well pump replaced, which was a little bit of a screw-up with the installer, because it wasn't the only problem. So... Um, because it wasn't the only problem, so the long and the short of it is we shouldn't have spent as much as we did, but it was a legitimate expense on on their part. I went back and forth with them a few times, but ultimately, you know, we hired them, so, you know, we're stuck with paying them. We got a new well pump, the sprinklers work a lot better, a lot more water comes out of it. Basically, the problem is, is that the well is fairly sandy, so the impellers and the pump keep sucking up sand. And it's grinding down the impellers, so we didn't get a lot of life out of the last pump. Um, one of the things we tried to do is raise the pump up about twenty feet to get it off the bottom. And hopefully, we get a little bit more life out of the impeller in the wet end of the next pump. Um, so that's basically what that is, that's about a seven thousand dollar expense we weren't planning on taking out of that line item. So we will likely go over that later in the year also, as we start paying for all the actual ground care expense. And that's really what I wanted to bring up uh to you, those are the only uh big ones. Um, the one big maintenance item for Public Works was uh which we budgeted for, but it it's a, it was a big hit early, because we wanted to do it before plow season. Is we took one of the Peterbilt trucks, uh the two thousand and fourteen one, and then sandblasted and repainted the bed and body, um just to extend the life of that a little bit. So that was around an eight thousand dollar expense, so a pretty big expense.
What budget's that under, uh, Eric?
Uh. Let me look, it's under, it should be under, like, I wanna.
What are you looking for?
Vehicle repair.
Oh, oh, three oh three.
I should see the specific one.
Oh, three oh one, oh, three oh one.
Okay.
The maintenance, oh, three oh one, four three five.
Yeah, three five, vehicle maintenance, okay, got it, okay, well, you still only had thirty-three percent of your expenditures, so.
Right.
Although stuff can happen.
Right, I mean, but we're going into plow season, when you normally break stuff and expend money. So, but we did budget for that additionally above last year's maintenance budget, so we were kind of accounting for it. And then the other one I want to bring to your attention is we are over right now on hauling fees at the transfer station. Um, and a part of that is, we ended up uh taking a lot longer to rebuild the walls than we thought. And so we ended up having to use the open compacters or the open containers which don't pack down nearly as efficiently, especially with the regular garbage. So we had more hauling fees than we normally would have expected to at this point. Um, it's not a super lot of money, it'll all work out, I think, within the transfer station budget, I think we're okay. But I'm just bringing your attention that that particular one is uh going to need a transfer into it at some point also. But not for quite a while. And that's it, that's that's the big stuff, unless, again, you have other questions for me.
Anyone have any more questions for Eric on the budget summary, or Barbara?
I had a question, uh, just in regards to the trans, the uh, the fees for uh uh moving the garbage, the Willa Manic could be considered, looking for a, maybe a used uh container truck? Like we talked about, like Keevern and Marlboro both have done?
I mean, the the question becomes, Kurt, you know, it's not just a container truck, it's a container truck and somebody hauling a couple of days a week and doing the loads. Um, to be perfectly honest, I haven't looked at it. I mean, it's just, it's one more thing that we would have to put on Public Works bucket. And either that means we gotta add an employee, or we cut away a lot of the excess time we've been able to give the department by going to a fourth employee.
Really? I mean, what, one, one guy couldn't peel himself away for one or two, well. It says, it's not all day, I mean, it's it's hauling from Andover to Willa Manic and back, that's what they, the other towns do, and uh everybody has a CDL license down here. And uh, I mean, figure out your costs of of hauling right now, having uh uh really wasted it versus ourselves doing. You know, over it, over the cost of a a a used or new truck.
Sure. I I mean, I'm I'm willing to explore that, I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just you know, it's one more thing to have to deal with, frankly. But, again, I I don't mind looking into it, certainly.
You hire the right public work supervisor, maybe that's a job for him or her.
Sure.
A lot easier said than done. Any other questions for Eric or Barbara on the budget? Okay, uh, hearing, hearing none, or the Town Treasurer's Report, I should have said. Uh, let's move on to Item Six A, Budget Transfer Supplemental Appropriations. Um, we really have the over expenditure request, which is in the packet, and I think that was in the original also. So it looks like we have a uh an over expenditure request that exceeds our normal uh amount of for our tar, our trigger amount of five thousand dollars. Um, so this is for the brush pile removal, Eric?
Yeah, it is.
Tough to read some of this, but.
One note on this, though, this has not been reviewed by the Board of Selectmen. And the reason it hasn't was, I got the agreement in place with them, you know, before uh or after the last meeting. Um, and so if you're more comfortable, I, we can send it to the Board of Selectmen for approval. But you are the Board of Finance, so I figure you can approve it without them if you so choose. Um, it's just a question of your comfort level. The reason I did it that way is because I'd really like to grind it up next week, because I think I have contractor availability next week. Um, so that's why I wanted to talk about it here, whether that was something you were all comfortable with doing without passing back before the Board of Selectmen, kind of your call.
Um, and can I just say one thing, uh Amanda, we've got, this is in the original packet, we're good. Um, so this is to get us from seventy-five hundred to forty, fourteen thousand.
Correct.
This is the request. Um, so we could bless it, basically, and the Board of Selectmen could then take that up and execute it?
Uh, if you bless it, I'll have the contractor, I'll sign the contract and have the contractor in next week.
Oh, so we don't even need the Board of Selectmen?
Skip the Board of Selectmen process. And I, I'm personally comfortable with that, because I think the reason we put this process in place was to reduce the burden of, you know, Eric having to come to us for these transfers and and allowing the Board of Selectmen to kind of, uh, you know, do their thing, and that we really just wanted oversight on big-ticket items such as this. So I don't know that the Board of Selectmen would have any angst over this, and and um, that's that's something that frankly, from my standpoint, I think it's more that Eric will have to deal with their angst than with us, I mean, we can, we can certainly bless the action, and then in in my opinion, I think it still follows the spirit of what we were trying to do.
I mean, something of that magnitude ha- only you can approve it. It's just a question of whether you want the Board of Selectmen to bless it before you approve it, or whether you feel comfortable acting on it yourself.
Okay, well, from my standpoint, then, I agree with Mark, you know, we can make a call now, and that's fine. Uh, I just wanted to just check on what the logistics of that was, that's fine.
Process, and I think.
Can I ask you a question?
Yep.
I'm just curious why it was so more expensive than the original budget price? Did they say why?
This is what we were talking about earlier, how we hadn't done it for a couple of years, so, go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, so basically, the last time we did this, which was, I wanna say, three years ago, I had Eddie break out the receipts, we spent about ten thousand dollars doing it, but the pile was far smaller. This is something we should be doing annually, um, we didn't do it last year, and I don't believe we did it the year before. So we're basically chewing up three years of stuff instead of one year. Now, in truth, because a big part of the cost is mobilization, the overall cost is probably less to the town if we do bigger piles less often. Um, so this probably is more cost-effective. However, I'm a little worried, we're gonna get in trouble with our permitting, because we let the pile grow to a size that's really beyond the scope of what we should be piling up on top of our capped landfill. Um, if that makes sense.
Hey, Eric, a question for you, so um, I think if you had your druthers, we would do this every year.
Yep.
Um, we're now three, you know, this is a three-year in, you know, is there, does it make sense to split that difference and just kind of schedule this every two years?
Um, it may. The problem is, the bigger the pile, the harder it gets to work around it, and the more it affects the drainage at the transfer station. Um, part of our problem is because we have a capped landfill, all the upper parking lots drain down. And we finally put in a decent drainage basin and made the drainage correct. But the problem is, so we can get the drain, the water down to the lower level. But right now, the only thing we can do is allow it to infiltrate across the capped landfill. What we'd like to do is put in a pipe and pipe it past the landfill, but you, what, what you absolutely can't do um, without, you know, a blessing by the Pope, probably, is to dig up an existing capped landfill.
No, no, okay, this is where my work expertise comes into play, don't touch that landfill.
Exactly.
But you have to realize, too, guys, is that girls.
Bad, 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 bad.
Three years worth of storms we've had, we've had a lot of storms in the last three years.
Yeah, and knocks down limbs, and it, I get it, um, I'm just saying, you know, when you talk about economies of scale. When, you know, okay, we let it ride three years and we get away with it. Right, cheaper to, in a sense, to, because of mobilization costs, I get that. Um, that's something I'm familiar with from work, so I just asked the question, but, uh, you know, look, I'm not against the idea that we should do it every year at all, I just wanted to raise it as, uh, maybe we should, from a budgeting standpoint, say, okay, every two years we're gonna do, it's like pumping out your septic system or something, every two years, we do, you know, it's not every year, it's every two, but if you're telling me it's every year and that's the way it needs to be, okay.
Well, I'm telling you, that's the way it should be, but I will tell you, that's certainly not the way we've always done it. And I know that as a town, we've gotten in trouble before, because at least once or twice prior, instead of getting the actual organic material hauled away afterward, they just kind of pushed it over the back with the backhoe. Um, and uh, we're cited for that, so I don't wanna.
With chips, come on now.
Right, so I don't wanna repeat that uh portion.
I I know, I hear you, and that's fine, I just was throwing it out there, but um, you know, again, I'm willing to totally go along with what you're saying, I just wanted to ask the question, that's all.
Sure, yep.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we've only done it two times, haven't we? Since the uh, the last administration, we let it all go. Remember, they had that giant pile you wanted us to burn, and we said, no way?
Right.
Yeah. I mean, that's, we've, we've out, we've only expended funds twice on this, so I'm I'm all for doing it yearly, personally.
Yeah, and and that was one of my thoughts, too, was to go back and see whether we could permit it and actually burn it. But one, that would be an enormous, we clearly couldn't burn the whole pile. We would have had to, based on the cubic yards, we would have had to divide it into six piles, I think, and burn one pile at a time. So it just wasn't really, you know.
It it was no good.
Yeah, plus, given the fact that we're in a drought, um, there was no way I was getting permission to burn anyway, so.
Okay. Alright, do you have any other questions for Eric? On this? Alright, um, anybody wanna make a motion about approving the over expenditure request?
I'll make that motion, I motion that we uh, I rather I move, that we approve the over spender ex- uh, um, request for the town dump.
I'll second it.
Okay, so uh, Rob has moved that we approved the over expenditure amount of sixty-five hundred dollars for the uh landfill for the uh brush uh removal, Louise has seconded, uh, any other discussion on this topic? Okay, hearing none, let's uh take a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, passes unanimously, thank you. Alright, let's go on to Item Number Seven, Old Business. Seven A is the Governor's Executive Order, Eric, do you have any updates?
Uh, I do, the, so we, so they have a new kind of tiered system for alerting municipalities when they reach certain thresholds of uh active coronavirus cases. Um, so I've been looking, and it appears we're going to make it without uh into next week without being in the red category, red category being over fifteen uh, you know, fifteen cases per hundred thousand per day, basically. Um, for the town of Andover, that equates to six point eight people every two weeks getting COVID nineteen. Um, it looks like our number's going to be six, so we're gonna be under the threshold, but not a real lot. So we're definitely getting a resurgence back in the town. And the Board of Selectmen going forward is gonna have to think about what mitigation steps they want to be. There are no mitigation steps that are being proposed at this very second, but I suspect that may change as Connecticut and truly the entire country is seeing a a dramatic resurgence in COVID nineteen. Don't know how that's gonna play out, we've been working with IT on a you know, on coming up with a plan, so if we're stuck with employees working back at home again, um, we can deal with it. Uh, there is currently one town employee that is nearing the end of their two-week uh penance for being exposed to somebody who had COVID nineteen. Um, that is the tax collector, she should be back Monday, she has tested negative. Um, but since it's only a couple more days for the whole fourteen-day period, I told her to just stay out through tomorrow and then come back in Monday morning. So far, we haven't had any real problems with town employees, but uh you never know. Um, and I don't really have any information at this point as to what's gonna happen for next year's budget. Uh, I think it's way too early to really know. Um, what I can say is that we've been able to minimize our direct COVID-related expenses. Um, and so far, it doesn't seem like the elementary school has been uh encountering huge problems staying within their budget, but part of that is they've got some supplemental state funding that's COVID-related, that they were able to pay for a lot of their expenses. So, um, that's basically it, we are requesting reimbursement for some of our COVID-related expenses. And Barbara can tell you the, an exact number, but, you know, it's not a ton of money, but it's in the six, seven thousand dollar category. So it's not insignificant, certainly worth applying for, um, but, you know, I can't tell you exactly how much we're actually gonna get out of it. Um.
Question for you, are we have, do we still have an amount, a significant amount of meetings happening in the community room now, that we open things back up or not?
Not a significant, we have some meetings.
Cause I mean, those could go back to Zoom, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, we could.
Really be meeting.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that would be the logical next thing. Yeah, I mean, to me, that would be the logical next things to start considering pushing the meetings back. You know, um, the real question is, is if we break. The fifteen per hundred thousand is, we've got to decide as a town. Actually, really, the first selectman has to decide because he's technically. You know, in a public health emergency, he's technically the decision maker, has to decide whether. Uh, we go back to the phase two standards. Or we stay with phase three standards, because each municipality has to make that determination. Um, and then what other measures get implemented, that's really. At the end of the day, that's a first selectman, uh, first selectman decision.
Erica, the town by town results on the state site for any, do you know?
Are, yeah.
Hard to find. You have to.
Know where to look.
One of the dashboard items and then it pops up a map behind that.
There, there's a, there's a link I have somewhere, unfortunately not on this computer, it's actually on my work comp where I can go right to the. The town level.
I found it the other day, so there's like a dashboard item that summarizes the. Pop the rates, and I think if you click on that, then it opens the detail behind it.
The main problem I have with the state numbers is that they're cumulative, or at least eh, the ones that I'm looking at are cumulative. Which don't tell you anything, unfortunately, um, because you can ignore. Everything that happened before, what we're dealing with is now.
Right.
And my frustration with the state reports, as much as they're actually, they have a lot of data. But the way they present that data, I have an issue with, because you don't get. Where we are now. As well as you can, and there's actually a much better website. The Financial Times has a fantastic website where they're pulling off of. Other people's data and doing it state by state, also country by country, but you can scroll down and get the state, US states. And they're way better, because they give you a seven day rolling average. State by state. We can't get town by town, obviously. You know, it's an international newspaper.
Actually, it is possible to get that out of the state data.
It is.
You have to, you have to do a bunch of manipulation. What you have to do is you have to, you have to download the whole thing as an Excel file. Sort by town initially, and then sort by day sequentially backwards. And then you can look day by day when new COVID cases pop up. And you basically count back fourteen days and say, how, how much bigger did the number get in fourteen days? So it's possible to figure it out.
It's there, alright, I hear you, but that, you know, from a standpoint of. From my, on my own edification, like, you know, a graph is much more. Useful than that.
I, I did find the link, and Amanda, if you want me to allow me to share my screen, I'll kind of show where it is, but. We may be getting a little bit of uh, off into the weeds here, but.
We are, but I'll also mention, by the way, uh, with the discussion with AES. Uh, you know, as you guys know, I have two kids in AES and it's going quite well. Uh, I've actually been pleasantly surprised.
Good.
My report.
So if you go to ct.gov, you're gonna always end up with this little banner at the top, and then kind of that mauve color, you can click on that. And you're gonna be taken to this COVID nineteen response, which I usually click to see the travel advisory, because you know, we've got. Family in other states, we've got business travel worth still considering. But if you click on this COVID, this little, it doesn't even look like a link, but.
Yes, the data tracker.
Data tracker. Or the one, oh, and I think it takes you to the same place. So there's a daily data report for Connecticut, and then you can pull up the town. Uh, here.
It'll give you raw numbers though. What it doesn't really give you is rates, right?
It shows the average. Two weeks.
Right, the rate per hundred thousand was. But the new data comes out tomorrow. And that should add only two cases to Andover, so we should be at six. Which will put us just slightly under fifteen, because we have to have six point eight cases to turn red.
Okay.
So you wake up tomorrow and we'll be orange.
Thanks Mark for showing me that, because I, I've been to this, I've been, I've drilled down this far before, but I didn't realize. Um, that one map. I don't think I went, eh, there was maybe one step I didn't do.
But didn't look like a link.
Map is, since they have it adjusted for population, that's actually way more useful than. I thought, so thank you.
Just, just as a note, the uh, at. Twelve noon today, the fire chief closed the fire station. Uh, due to the uh, I guess it's four percent nationwide. It's, it's a, above four percent uh, the amount of cases nationwide, so. Fire station is shut down and uh. This is for Amanda, I'm sure the fire commission will be going back to Zoom meetings that are next, next meeting, but. The only thing we're open for is calls only, emergency calls only.
So this is, I, I admit, it's wildly off topic, but bear with me. Um, thanks, um, Halloween. There's supposed to be an event. You, you know, Saturday, uh, what, fire department always does a thing for the kid. No, at the gazebo, there was a thing that was gonna get done. Is that all done? Is that all canceled or what?
As of this very minute, that is not canceled. Um, if we are red, uh, tomorrow, I'm gonna cancel it. If we're not red, I'm probably not gonna cancel it. And the reason actually is that. I think the way that's set up is a lot safer than trick or treating. And I think if we don't offer something, we're gonna get more people trick or treating. So I've come to the conclusion that I think it's actually a safer overall plan. To do it than to cancel it. Um, the way it will be is they'll, the, the static displays will be. Uh, up essentially in the back of people's cars. The kids will be paraded in front of the cars, no contact with the people. You know, massive separation of the people. And the kids will each be handed one preassembled bag by somebody wearing masks and gloves and be sent packing.
Goody bags, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's gonna be kind of a semi crappy event anyway. But I think it's about as safe as we can physically make it.
I mean, I, I'll just tell you, as somebody who typically trick or treats in this town with my kids. Um, I texted some people, I normally trick or treat, and nobody's doing it, I mean. You know, there, there's usually this one neighborhood we all go to. And I have no idea with. How that's all gonna shake out, but a lot of us are bailing. And I saw the email that came out about. What's being done at the gazebo area. And you know, we're planning, my kids are planning a show now, and that's gonna literally be their entire. Halloween, that's it.
Yeah, I know. I wish.
Um, but I don't want, I don't want to do a Halloween thing that is dangerous at the same time. You know, if that, if that's not gonna happen, I'd like to know, so. If you do. Because of state numbers or whatever, or our local numbers, if you decide to pull the plug. Um, is there a way you can let me know?
Yeah, yeah, we definitely can.
Thank you. Just because I got two little girls who are. You know, that's their trick or treat this year.
Understood.
Hey Eric, on that same note, you used to, used to publicize. Uh, how many cases came in? I don't see that, haven't seen that in the past maybe month or so. Will you be going back to that?
I mean, I think I will probably start providing that number to the board of selectmen. And, and, and I think. I, I want to work with them a little bit about what our safety messaging is. But I do want to start putting back out there to the community that, hey, we're starting to get community spread in town. We really don't want to shut down the schools, we really want to do, don't do all these other things, so. Please take the precautions seriously, you know, quit hanging out with your buddies drinking and, you know, uh.
Yeah, I, I would recommend that, because, because we're up in the four percent level now. People are gonna start saying, okay, what are we doing about it?
Exactly.
I mean, I've seen some hopeful things about um, elementary school kids versus older kids. Um, and I hope that's true, and I know that my kids and their. You know, all the, their schoolmates at Andover Elementary seem to be doing well. So I'm kind of thrilled by that, and yet maybe we're just in an oasis and it's. Gonna crash over us, I really don't know. Um, I'm certainly not an epidemiologist. All I can say is. So far, the, the fact that our kids have been going full time every day.
Yep.
Most of our kids, not every kid. Uh, but my two have been. And it's been working out. Gives me some hope that they can pull this off, you know?
Understood, yeah, and I, and I certainly hope so, because it's. You know, you want to provide as much continuity to kids as you absolutely. You know, can. And there's no question from talking to parents of kids that are going to RAM, that the split schedule. Is very distracting for kids and a bunch of kids are having real. Especially those with learning disabilities to begin with, they're really suffering in that environment.
Yeah, my kids don't have any of that, and they're, they're both actually fairly advanced for their age, and in the spring. When we were all virtual. They struggled, I mean, they hated it. They hated it, so they're thrilled to be back. Um, and yet, you know, if they have to hate it because people are dying, hey, whatever. Uh, but it seems so far that we've pulled it off, AES. I hope that still continues, uh, with everything spiking. I mean, we've seen the num, we've all seen the numbers.
Sure.
It's not good.
The other thing that really plays in their favor is that everybody was really concerned about how kids are gonna tolerate. Wearing masks. And so far, that has not really been an issue. But the thing people have to remember is that we're old. So like, when a year goes by, that's like a, you know, we've been doing something for fifty, however many years. You know, so change is hard. You know, when you're four, whole year has gone by, so twenty five percent of your life has been lived this way. So it's not really a big deal, it's just the way it is.
My kids mask up without complaint, they really do, they don't mind it, they're fine.
Really, the adults that struggle with it, not the kids.
Yeah, anyway, we're, we off topic, my fault, sorry. Uh, Mark, you wanna? Corral this, I'm sorry. You're muted, Mark. Mark, you're muted. You're muted.
Got it, got it, sorry.
There you go.
Find that button, so yeah, no problem. Anything else related to the pandemic or the executive order, Eric? We should be aware of. Looks like I know, okay.
Correct, no.
Um, alright, so item seven B is the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one town budget. So that's, I don't know if this should even be on here anymore, I mean, we've pretty much gotten our budget right, so.
Yeah, it was just really their, you know, budget review, if you wanted further budget review.
Yeah. Don't have any discussion on that from my end, anyone? Okay, uh, oh, item seven C, this is, I have to fall on my sword, the board of education requests for unexpected, unexpended funds. In the school improvement account. So I was supposed to write a letter, which I did draft, but I never completed or sent, so I'll do that this week, and I'll send that around if everyone remembers the. Uh, the basic uh, gist of, decided in our last meeting was that the, it turned out that this was a moot point. That the town really does not have the unexpected, unexpended funds that they had expected. Uh, so I was just gonna write a letter just to confirm that with the town, or with the uh, school. And uh, just. Let them know that if we're understanding it's different, then they should let us know, we'll, we'll just bring it up again, but this, this point's basically off. So I'll, I'll, I will, you know, skip this on the agenda for next meeting, we'll have a copy, we'll close it out at that point. Any questions on that? Okay, uh, item seven D, transportation infrastructure overview.
I think that.
Think we had that before the meeting, when Kurt and I were talking about the speed bumps being uh, removed, so.
Right, I think that can be deleted unless you have specific questions. I gave you all last week, or last month, I believe, the summary of like. Total expenses, expected expenses for major transportation infrastructure. So unless you have any questions for me, I would say just skip that.
Anywhere swap, is Bear Swamp Road included?
We might forget a couple or two on Bear Swamp Road, you never know.
Now, now.
Alright, anything else on that? Okay, let's move to item eight. Uh, eight A is the hiring committee for the assistant finance officer.
Diane, do you want to take that one?
Well, that's in place, so I mean. So we've had uh, two days of interviews, we have our last day tomorrow. And then hopefully next week, you guys will pick somebody. Gotta move it along.
Yes, we do.
Who makes the final hiring decision here? That you, Eric?
That's a good question, um. That's a really good question. I, what I would say is that I would like the hiring committee, the reason why. I left it with an odd number was I figured we as a group after the last interview, really ought to collectively make a decision. Um, because it affects kind of all of us. Um, and it has to be agreed to between us and the board of ed. So I think collectively, if we all come to an agreement on a candidate, that would help.
So let's hope that that uh. Is actually how it plays out then, so there's no concerns. Alright. Anything else, any questions for Diane or Eric on that one?
Interviewing with masks on. It's my first round of interviewing people with wearing masks, it's painful.
Yeah, I had to do that a few weeks ago, it's, it's an odd thing, yeah.
We're not zooming everything, you know? We're not doing Zoom interviews for everyone?
No.
No.
Wow.
Well, let's get this last meeting in, because it looks like next week we may not be able to, so.
Oh, I was thinking the exact thing, let's, we'll wait to get the results until we have our last.
I spent the last two days on Zoom. Uh, for work, mediation, big mediation, lots of parties, there had to be thirty people. On Zoom for these mediations and breakout rooms and all this stuff, it was very complicated. Um, but I'm just, I'm blown away that we're doing in-person stuff even now.
Yeah, I'm a little surprised, we did one over the summer, but uh, yeah, okay. Well, um, anything else on that topic? Okay, good luck, committee on that one. Uh, item eight B, audit status. This is Barbara's?
Yeah, um, been, been back and forth with the auditor, a few emails, and I've already sent off. A pile of stuff. They are probably going to do everything remotely, as ended up happening. At the end of last year, um. It's, 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 it's doable, it just means that instead of they're coming in and, you know, pulling things they need to look at, I'm gonna have to do a lot of. Scanning PDFing and getting stuff to them. Um. I'm working on the schedules and statements, I haven't. Had a lot of time to pick it up the last um. Couple of weeks, because I've been working on this state report for the COVID reimbursement. And then uh, just doing the multi, multitude of things in this office, you know, that two people used to do. I'm hoping, I'm probably going to, and I discussed this with Eric today. Um. I've been holding my hours at about thirty four a week uh, for personal reasons. And I've talked to Eric about upping it, you know, maybe three hours a week just to work on audit. Schedules and statements, um. I have the templates from last year, that was my first time doing it, so it's going a lot, lot faster this year for me. And I will see what I can get done by the end of the year, not sure if I'll be here. Um, after the end of the calendar year, may have to, you know, turn it off to, turn it over to your new person. But I will see um, what I can accomplish. So, any questions?
Eric, do you have any concerns over that process or schedule?
Um. Not that I want to go through right now, no.
Alright. Any questions? Any questions for Barbara or Eric on that one? Okay, item eight C is the transfer station brush grinding. I think we've talked about that at two different points. Anybody have any additional questions on that? Okay, it sounds like no, we'll, uh, we'll leave that there. I think that can probably come off of the business list. We could put it on a little business, but we've already acted upon the transfer or the uh over expenditure request. Um, item eight D is the twenty twenty-one meeting schedule and uh see Amanda had added that on here. Um, I also uh received a letter in from the town clerk in the mail a couple of days ago uh reminding the board chairs that we need to have the meeting schedule posted by uh X date. I can't remember exactly the, the date that we have to have that done. So Amanda, I assume that you put this meeting schedule together based on our algorithm of having it the first or the third, fourth Wednesday or whatever, every month?
Yes.
Okay. So. I'm sorry?
I said Thanksgiving Eve seems problematic.
Yeah, yeah, it's, is possibly does the week before Christmas. I know people sometimes travel over the holidays. So I mean, what I would suggest is that we probably uh move each of those dates, you know, the week before. Um, does anybody have any other suggestions?
I just have one thing. I know this summer that we really canceled two meetings, July and August. Should we be having scheduled on the calendar meetings? Or only leave ourselves open in case we need to have one?
I think we should.
And not much is going on then.
Correct. I, I personally think we should keep scheduled meetings because if we don't, then something comes up, we have to call a special meeting and then we can only top, talk about the specific topic of that special meeting. So it becomes into a, it, it significantly limits our flexibility in topics for discussion and the
Okay.
You know, I mean, given something crazy like a pandemic, you know, we were fortunate, I think, that things went pretty smoothly.
Right.
And the Board of Selectmen and, and Eric and the town uh the town employees handled everything well, but you know, my personal belief is that we probably should continue to keep them scheduled to provide ourselves with the flexibility of having a regular meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
So to go with what you were saying, Mark, if I were to move that um we move our November and December meetings up a week. So eleven twenty-four becomes eleven seventeen and twelve twenty-two becomes twelve fifteen. Um, that's, that's what we're talking about. That makes sense to me personally and I'm happy to make that motion if uh, if we need a motion on that.
So that's the twenty.
The two, the, you know, the November and December meetings are always.
Yeah, I was looking at the wrong year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the twenty, the twenty-fourth would become the seventeenth, yes.
Right.
And the uh twenty-second would become the fifteenth. I mean, that sounds, that sounds reasonable to me and I, I would think we could entertain a motion on it. We can always discuss at that point.
Alright, so I, I move that we do that, that we back up the November and December meeting dates one week, seven days. And you know, November, well, now it's gone away, but um.
November seventeenth would be the new date.
Right. Um, I make that motion. I agree with it. Uh, I have every, yes, hopefully if we can do it, family obligations on those holidays, so let's, let's back it up.
Okay, anybody wanna second the motion?
I'll second. Oh, go ahead.
Let's have Linda's hand up first.
Linda's quicker than me.
Linda's like, yes.
Okay, any discussion on that motion? Okay, um, hearing none, let's go ahead and take a vote uh on adopting this meeting schedule with the uh amendations that Rob proposed. Um, all in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, team.
Thank you.
Alright. So Amanda, if you could make the changes on this uh for this document, then send me the documents so that I can follow up with the town clerk also. Alright, uh, item eight E is the Fiscal Year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Annual Report. Uh, again, I follow my sword. We have one other, it's due from, from this board also and Amanda sent out a reminder and I uh I have not gotten to that yet. It's uh, but uh, I wanna, I wanna, we'll give it a little thought. Um, I will put something together probably this weekend and, and I'll circulate a draft. If everybody has any inputs, you can, you can uh submit those to me, of course, and we can put that into the town. Any other comments on that agenda item? Okay, item eight F is the RAM Board of Education Contract Negotiation. So uh, the, Eric, do you wanna explain the context for this one? Since you've got the original contact.
Um, the, the current uh Acting Superintendent for RAM reached out for me and asked for uh the contact information at the Board of Finance. Because what's happened is they've actually managed to negotiate their teachers' contracts early. Um, surprising everybody and they have basically a finished contract ready to go. They wanted to have a discussion and explain it to a member of the Board of Finance to bring back to the Board of Finance to understand uh what the status of the contract was. So they asked for the Board of Finance if one person was willing to go meet with them to uh go over the contracts before it becomes public.
And I believe I forwarded that uh request to all of you. I didn't hear back from anybody, so I assume there's nobody was, that's got the deep passion with, to talk about the Board of Education contract, but go ahead, Rob.
Eric, I have a quick question. Uh, when in the week would that normally be done or i- is it completely open?
Uh, I don't know. You would have to reach out directly to the Acting Superintendent and just tell them what your availability is. I mean, probably during the day at some point.
Yeah, let me follow up on that. So I reached, I got an email a couple of days later and a call from Kathleen Goodwin, who's the Vice Chair of the RAM Board of Ed. And I hadn't heard back from anybody, so I told her that, you know, I, I would be available, um, you know, if, if nobody else was. So she's got a meeting set up tomorrow, uh, or she asked if I would be available tomorrow, Thursday at three forty-five uh PM, which I told her was okay for me. I just happen to be my one day. I'm not loaded with meetings, so. Um, so that's, that's when we have a tentative uh meeting uh set up.
Okay, unfortunately, I, I have a four PM work meeting tomorrow, so. I, you know, I would have, I would consider it in the back half of any week, uh, even though I'm working like most of you all uh full-time from home and, and whatnot. Technically, I, I could always carve out an hour here or there if I had to.
Yeah.
Uh, but no, next, tomorrow, just how happens. I have a thing, so sorry, Mark. I would have joined.
Alright, appreciate it. Well, I'll, you know, again, if anybody else is interested, um, you know, I'll, it's gonna be with uh Scott, who's the Acting Superintendent and Mal Leichter uh from the Hebron Board of Finance, and so they'll go over it. Now, I'll do my best to summarize. Um, I think it's just informational. As they pointed out, they, they, they give the option for somebody from the Board of Finance to sit in on these negotiations, but you know, boom, they, they got this contract quickly, so they just wanna kind of explain where they are and what happened with it, I guess, so. Uh, I'll, I'll attend that and, and summarize for you guys the next meeting or before. Alright, anybody have any questions or comments on that? Okay, next item is uh item, agenda item nine, which is the approval of the meeting minutes from Wednesday, September twenty-third. I personally looked them over and they looked appropriate to me. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody wanna make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from September twenty-third?
I still move. I move, we approve those meetings.
Okay. Anybody second? Alright, Louise, so Rob moves to approve the meeting minutes from Sept- Wednesday, September twenty-third. Louise seconds. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any knows? Anybody abstaining? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item, agenda item ten, which is liaison reports. Do we have any active liaison committees going on?
Dan, you're muted.
Louise, you were.
The only thing we have uh going on.
Improvements, right? Is anything going on with that?
The only thing we, I have going on is that Senior Building Committee. So we had a meeting scheduled that got moved till November, so basically where that's sitting right now is there's been some draft plans drawn up, things like that, and that's kind of where we're at right now. So the, the site has been picked, the scope has been identified and where we go from there and that meeting you know, is the next meeting scheduled for November twelfth, so.
And Louise, you're in Capital Improvements Planning Committee, am I remembering?
Yeah, I am, and um, nothing different from what I sent you back a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
About, um, I forget what it was. Um, something that we were discussing and Eric had mentioned, um. I'm sorry, I can't remember it.
You said that a new, you were talking about the newer used sweeper for the town.
Oh, that's right, right.
Email, yeah.
Right, and uh, we were having a discussion.
Sweeper with the Town of Hebron, yeah.
Right, we were discussing that and I just kind of mentioned that it may be a little bit more advantageous to look at a town that's in more similarity with Angover.
Yeah. Sure.
And we haven't had another meeting since, so.
Okay. Alright. Uh, anybody have any questions or other information they wanna share on these? I think that's the only open committees we still have going. Okay, let's move on to item number eleven. This is Board Open Discussion. Anybody have any other topics I wanna bring before the board? Questions or issues? Okay, um, agenda item twelve, um, this is, was public speaking or it still is public speaking, sorry, in our uh, in our agenda? Um, any public comment? Okay, hearing none. We'll go on to item, which now item thirteen, which is uh our executive session. Um, so I'm not sure about the mechanics of this. I presume that Amanda stays, um, but publicly generally.
So what has to happen is you have to make a motion to go into executive session.
Right, right.
And then you also have to state who should be in the executive session. And uh, at that point, the recording is cut off. And then when we come out of executive session, we'll come out of executive session and we will presumably just adjourn the meeting. And then all we have to do is tell Amanda when we came out of executive session and when we adjourn, and I will handle that.
Got it, that makes sense, okay. Alright, so anybody wanna make a motion to go into executive session?
Do we all need to stay on during that timeframe?
Uh, you should. What I would, what I would suggest is you as a board invite myself and Barbara Griffin into executive session and then we throw everybody else out.
In a gentle way.
Okay.
Politely, correct.
And make that motion to have Eric and Barbara go into an executive session and everyone else be thrown out. Or however.
Louise is moved, moving in, going into executive session, uh, requesting Eric and Barbara attend. Uh, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, David's second, thank you. Alright, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, I guess that takes care of it then. Um, so thank you for uh your help, Amanda, once again.
Okay, Amanda, can you make me a co-host that way? Uh, and can you kick Nick out? Nick?
Yes, and that was at eight twenty-five and I am going to stop recording.